Okay, good evening, everyone. The time is seven thirty and this is the September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one work session of the Allen Dell Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone joining us tonight in person at Borough Hall. We are also live streaming our meetings via Zoom webinar for those who prefer to watch from elsewhere. We ask to those present to please mute your device at this time so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. And as always, there will be several opportunities for the public present to be heard. We will advise you at the appropriate times. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meeting Act announcement.
Sure, in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the Borough website, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the September twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and Borough website. Councilwoman Holman?
Here.
Councilwoman O'Connell is absent. Councilwoman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilwoman Sasso?
Here, happy to sit.
Councilwoman Strouch?
We lost Councilwoman Strouch, but it was on. Oh, it looks like he's rejoined.
Okay. Yeah, we'll, we'll come back to him.
He's reflected that he's signed it.
Okay, so, and, and yeah, we spoke with him and we can see him, so he, he's here.
Councilwoman.
And, and I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I'm sorry, I've, I've switched to a different internet connection. My wife is watching Ted Lasso on Apple TV and Apple TV.
Okay. And Mayor Bernstein.
I'm here too, thank you. Um, so that was the roll call, public comment. This is the first of three opportunities tonight for the public present to comment. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come to the microphone at the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to address the governing body. Not seeing anyone coming forward. We'll close the meeting to the public for the first time. Administration Agenda Review. On our regular session agenda tonight, we have one ordinance introduction and six resolutions. Does anyone have any questions or comments tonight about the agenda? No? Okay. We will then move to our council reports, committee reports. Councilman O'Connell is not here, so Councilman Sasso, good, good to see you. Would you like to give your report?
Good to be here. So the Land Use Committee has not met since our last meeting. At the last meeting, we, we added adjunct meeting where we discussed 5G.
Right, that's right.
And there's no update on that one, but there's no rush, but we're, you know, we've got that ball rolling.
Good, thank you very much.
So we had to schedule the next meeting though, which I'll do.
Good, thanks so much. Councilwoman Holman, would you like to give your report?
Sure. Hi, everybody. Like it's all full here.
The echo, the way that sounds.
So the Water Committee has been incredibly busy and actually really the entire council has been incredibly busy in, you know, communicating with residents and answering questions concerning the proposed water sale of Allen Dell Water to Suez, New Jersey. However, there's lots of other things that we do, and before I talk about that, I'd like to just, you know, bring everybody up to date on a couple of things. I want to thank Lane Simon and the Construction Code officials for their work in updating the inventory reports, which is a newer report that the NJDEP has required that water utilities supply to them. So as I've talked about before, there's many more regulations and requirements that are being put in, and this is one of them. So we are collecting and documenting information every time we do meter changes and things like that. Also, myself and Mike Vreeland and his team have been busy working on documents necessary to put in temporary treatment at the New Street Treatment Plant for PFAS removal. We are hopeful to have temporary treatment up and working in the near future. So that's something everybody should be aware of, and if they have any questions, feel free to ask me. Also, the decision has been made that the West Crescent Well will be turned off until we have determined the next steps in temporary treatment for PFAS at this West Crescent Well site. To be clear, the water is currently not in violation. However, the numbers have trended upwards. So we're just, you know, really thinking ahead. So that will, you know, our bulk water purchases are going to be a little bit higher. Unfortunately, that well went out of commission earlier than we would have liked due to the storm. So, you know, that was an unfortunate circumstance, so we'll be moving forward with that. So, kind of a little statement, the Allen Dell Water Committee is tasked with ensuring that Allen Dell customers receive safe and reliable drinking water. And over the past three years, I can say I've been studying the cost and the complexity of meeting this task. And Allen Dell does not have the resources or the expertise to provide the oversight necessary to do that job. The water regulations are only going to become more onerous, more complex, and more expensive. And in addition to that, we have an aging system, as I've shared, you know, many times, some of the, you know, nineteen-ten, these pipes were put in very early. Suez is in the business of treating and distributing water. And Allen Dell, we're a municipality that is not our primary business. So, you know, I, I feel and I've tried to communicate to members of the community at large that we should not be taking on the liability of that job, not having the knowledge and the resources to do it properly. So, you know, I wanted to make sure I, I shared that with everybody and also wanted to clarify just three little components of how, thinking about the water system and us all getting water as residents in Allen Dell, is that there's the water, and then there's the cost of the water, think about it in three buckets, and then there's the treatment, storage, and distribution of that water so that we can drink it. The water resource is controlled by the NJDEP. So the NJDEP is the governing body that currently now and in the future, whether we hold or sell our water, will allot permits to be able to pull a certain amount of water and how it's being utilized. So that's the water resource. The cost of the water currently in Allen Dell, we try to balance things. We say no to a lot of improvements because we can't afford it. If we are to pass a referendum and everything goes smoothly and we sell the water to Suez, so we have ten years of rates. The BPU, the Board of Public Utilities, is the governing body that looks out for the cost of water to residents. So if the NJDEP watches, safeguards, it's our resource of the water, the Board of Public Utility safeguards the cost to residents. The treatment, storage, and distribution, currently we hold all that liability. If there is a problem, if something gets fixed, I mean, something needs to be fixed, something, you know, if we have a violation, we are responsible for that. And what we are looking to do is to move that responsibility to Suez, that they, this is their business. So there's been a lot of misinformation that I've seen as I peruse on occasion Facebook. And one of the things that we will be doing as a team is creating a real question and answer. So there'll be questions that residents have asked and then the answers. So we will both have that as something you can access under the Water Department and then also post to our Facebook page. And I encourage residents to contact myself or any other member of the council with questions. We want to make sure you have the correct information. People that are posting that are not necessarily, that are not a part of the Water Committee may not have the correct answers. So, we look forward to having future water gatherings, public discussion, and thanks. Did I miss anything?
No, I mean, I mean, you could do it for another two hours.
I could. And I still have Amy's report, but.
Right, so.
Liz, can I just say real quick, as second on the committee, I, I couldn't have summed it up better than that. Definitely, I think we're all in agreement that the economy is a scale with Suez certainly, no, I don't, not sure we should be delivering our own water anymore than we should deliver our own electricity and gas. You know, it's not really for a little small town like this, the best option, so.
That's a good point, and um, we, we've worked, we've been unanimous, I too am part of the, the Water Committee. I've been there with you, not to the extent that you've been there. I wholly, wholly and fully support it and endorse it, and the council went six-oh on it.
Yes.
Yep, and good, and there's more to come. Councilman O'Toole?
What are you doing?
How are you doing?
So the Administration, Finance, and HR Committee has not had a meeting since our last council meeting. However, that doesn't mean that nothing's been going on. As you'll see on tonight's agenda, we're introducing the two thousand and twenty-one capital budget, which we've been working on for a while. We looked at all the requests from all the departments, went back and forth with each department to bring in a budget we could all live with. Total number of the budget is eight hundred and ten thousand, and out of that number, three hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars is from grants. Other than that, we had a note sale, rollover note for our capital ordinance, on which the net interest was point two-eight-nine percent. And the unpopular news this evening is that we anticipate sending out the final tax bills by the first week of October. Indulgence, I have Councilman O'Connell's.
Please do.
He asked me to speak to the public.
Go ahead.
I know it usually gives a number of calls into each of our emergency services, but I don't have that information tonight. What I do have is that we are well into the process of selecting our next police chief. Public Safety Committee has conducted interviews with the six candidates over the last two evenings. The good news is that we have six incredibly qualified candidates. The bad is that we have to choose only one of them. So, next up in the process, the entire Mary Council will interview the six candidates next week, so thereafter tally up the scores and announce the next chief.
Good summary of the process where we are. Councilman Strouch, do you want to give your report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Bernstein. I apologize for the delay. There was a lot of noise going on, so I muted myself. The DPW report, I, I, I know that I'm entering the final months of my sixteenth year on the council, I'm sorry, eighteenth year, sixth term on the council. And a month doesn't go by, two weeks don't go by, sometimes a day doesn't go by, or I'm not amazed by the performance of the, the DPW staff, and I can't say enough good things about them. I guess on this council report, on this DPW report, I'll shout out Rich McDowell, born and raised in Allen Dell. He got his chemical license so that he could help us treat the water at Crestwood Lake. And he, like many of the other, if not all the other staff at the DPW, has found a niche where they excel, and together they, you know, continue to keep the town running. For those of you who walk by Crestwood Lake every day, you may see that the water level is starting to drop. We've begun the draining process, and before that happens, a lot of stuff behind the scenes has to happen. And Rich McDowell is our man who handles that. So thank you, Rich. Thank you, DPW. I can't say enough good things about you. The, the Green Team will be meeting on Tuesday, October fifth. We're very excited that our Director of Operations, Ron Kistner, is working on putting together a field trip for the Green Team to visit our recycling center in Torn Valley. That's where Roselle Contracting, who takes our recycling, brings it to the Torn Valley Center. And so, myself and other members of the Green Team, for us, this is what floats our boat, and we're very excited about it. I also wanted to mention, for those people who are collecting the, or collecting the styrofoam in their garage or wherever, waiting for the next collection event, Mawa is hosting a recycling event on Saturday, October thirtieth, from nine AM to one PM. The, it's going to be held at four seventy-five Corporate Drive, Mawa. So, for those people who don't know, four seventy-five Corporate Drive, if you're riding, driving down Route seventeen South in Mawa, the FedEx Building is very close to the Mawa Township Municipal Building. That's Corporate Drive. That's where the event's going to be held. We have this information on the Borough website, and I cannot stress enough to the residents of Allen Dell and anybody else listening to me, go to allandalenewjersey.gov. That is where you'll find the information you need about what's going on in Allen Dell. So I cannot stress it enough, and if you haven't yet, when you go to the website, allandalenewjersey.gov website, sign up for the Swift Reach and the other, Nixle and the other social media platforms where Allen Dell will give you trusted and vetted information. And before I sign off, Ari, let me close this screen so I can see all of you. Before I sign off, I want to say, oh, there you are, Liz. Thank you, Liz. Yeah, Ray, Ari, Steve, this water, this water referendum that we're having in November is so incredibly well crafted, researched, and presented. I can't say enough good things about you, Liz, and your entire team, because I'm sure there's others that I'm not mentioning that have enabled the residents of Allen Dell to make an informed decision in November about the future of the water they drink. And I, for one, you know, have been supporting you from the beginning. Although, in the beginning, I could not imagine a world where I would supposedly give up my precious water. The reality is, we don't control it, the state does. And if we want to continue to control the water operations, then we will be paying more per gallon than if we team up with a, with a company like Suez and allow them to take over the operation. So, thank you again, and Ari, I will end my report with that, and thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Jim, for, for, for everything. Yeah, yeah, so if you. No, no, you go ahead. Why don't you give Amy's report, and then I'll give my mayor's report, then we'll do the professionals.
All right, hi, I'm reading on behalf of Amy Wozinski and the Facilities Committee Report. Two twenty-two thirty, West Crescent, actually, I correct myself, two twenty, West Crescent. We've already sold two thirty, West Crescent. Two twenty, West Crescent, Hampshire is still working with the chosen contractor to drill down the costs and do value engineering. And this needs to be done before we can complete all of the closing documents such as municipal facilities agreement. In the meantime, we are setting up meetings with Bond Council to get set up for when we are ready to close, which we are aiming for two months at this point. So it's, it is a great team and it's a labor of love, and Amy does a great job. That's me saying that. The nine eleven memorial, Amy wants to thank all of the Allen Dell residents who contributed to make this such a special ceremony for the twenty-year anniversary. She also mentions a specific thanks to John Gill and Ray for helping put all of the forty flags together that were there. Dan Richards for coordinating with Ramsey to hang that big flag, and Richie for his work in getting the fountains going. It really was an unbelievable evening that, that doesn't happen except for in, you know, a community where everybody pulls together and supports each other. It really was such an amazing, memorable event for the nine eleven memorial. The solicitation of bids for Phase Three and Page Four on the landscape, for the streetscape, are on the consent agenda, and we look forward to getting the next phases done on the A, B, and G side, and we will be starting in the spring. And then the chamber meeting, she attended the chamber meeting. She also met with two Allen Dell store owners from CKO Kickboxing and Define. It was great for her to, and to see all the merchants getting, you know, a lot more action going on. And they discussed the Allen Dell Day, which Amy said, and I would absolutely second, was just such a huge success. And we give a huge thank you and round of applause to Tyler Yakarino, who was the organizer. Amy also had a comment on the water, which she had sent me, which I'll read into the record. "The process to sell the water system was a year, was a two-year-long arduous process of research and studies, including an extensive feasibility study. The Water Committee exhausted every possibility to get to this point, including going all the way to government officials to ask for information. We no longer have the technical expertise and capability to ensure clean, safe, affordable drinking water to our residents. The regulations now and in the future coming down from the NJDEP are stringent, requiring technical expertise, updated treatment facilities that we do not have as a municipality. For example, the treatment facility that is currently needed immediately to treat PFAS will cost between seven to ten million dollars. This will not be the end of needed requirements, only the beginning. This, in addition to an aging set, system, led us to seek alternative options. As an elected official, we are tasked to recommend what is best for the borough. We recommend that selling the Allen Dell Water System is best for the borough. We already purchased fifty percent of our water from Suez, and they run operations for us. It's not about control, it's about providing clean, safe drinking water at an affordable price." So, that's what she said to me, and it echoes much of what I said too. Thank you, Mayor Bernstein.
Thank you, Councilwoman Holman and Councilwoman Wozinski. I will give my report, which will cover some of the things that we just said. Nine eleven, I want to thank everyone, especially Amy, for the beautiful and fitting tribute marking the twentieth anniversary of the nine eleven attacks. We had a great turnout, twenty years that we, you know, to the extent you can say you had a great night when you're celebrating something like that, but we did. We had, um, it was great that the residents and the community organizations gathered, and the ceremony, I thought, was, was poignant and beautiful. For those of us, for those of you that could not see it, there was a video. John Gill did a phenomenal job, and that was posted on social media. Allen Dell Day, it was a great day. I, I, there passed where the tape, to tape down the tents, to tape down the whatever, but we didn't have it. We, it was, it was hot, it was nice, it was sunny. I want to recognize the Chamber of Commerce, especially Tyler Yakarino, Event Chair. Tyler, you did a phenomenal job. Yeah, I know, it was tough, it was, there was COVID, there was, it was a change from the years past. I heard more and more people unsolicited saying this was the best year that they ever remember, so you should know that. And it celebrated our community spirit and the vendors and everyone. I just really think it was, it was hands down, it was so well done. Upcoming events, the Allen Dell Women's Club will be sponsoring a town-wide garage sale on Saturday, October second. More information can be obtained from their website, allandalewomen'sclub.org. And the Holiday Observers will be holding their annual Halloween poster painting contest. A pickup of the painting materials will be on Saturday, October ninth, from seven thirty to twelve noon at the Red Barn with drop-off of the finished paintings on Sunday. Matt, you want to add anything to that, or did I cover it?
That's pretty much it.
Okay, for more details.
Can't wait to see the paintings. I love that.
They will be displayed downtown.
Yeah.
I'll add that.
Right, and for more details, you can visit their website, holidayobservers.org. That is it for my report. Ray, would you like to give your report?
Yeah, very finite, the list, but busy in terms of time. Some working, of course, with Michelle's office on, on various matters and with Ron on property matters, and most of the time, though, I think it's been referred to in reports from the council, working with Public Safety Committee on the interviews that you're in the middle of, working with the Water Utility. Yeah, that, as late as this afternoon, and then, as was mentioned in the report of Councilwoman Wozinski that was read, it looks like the two twenty is, is now getting into its formative stage. So, the list is finite, but the hours are there.
The one, if you know, Ray, you'll, you'll understand it, but so the one day where you were arguing with the Pellet Division, or maybe was it the day before, where you're up at five-thirty, you're arguing all day, you're back here, and then you're at another borough or another town.
And I'm demanding a phone call.
Good thing there's Dunkin' Donuts at every town.
Right, so I don't know how you do it, but we're so appreciative and thankful that you do. Thank you, thank you very much. Michelle, would you like to give your report?
Sure, thank you. The Clerk's Office is just gearing up for the general election, which will be on Tuesday, November second. The Bergen County Clerk's Office has sent out vote-by-mail ballots to those voters who requested them. If anyone doesn't receive their ballot by September twenty-eighth, they should call the Bergen County Clerk's Office, or they can call us and we'll give them the information.
Do they give you a number of how many they send to Allen Dell? Like, how many people are registered for mail-in ballots? Just curious, because it is confusing between what, like, is it, you know, last year, everything was mailed? Do they give you, like, a Allen Dell?
They can. I, I haven't seen that number, but I certainly can get that number. Yeah. And we, we put all of the information on our website and social media. So thank you to Tyler and John for getting that posted. Tuesday, October twelfth, is the last day to register to vote for the general, this general election. And our office will be open until nine PM to accept the registration applications. And we'll also sell compost permits and dog licenses and anything else that we can help the residents with. And then finally, I just wanted to congratulate Mayor Bernstein. He came in third place overall.
Yes.
But first, out of the current mayors, in the Hackensack River Keepers Kayak Lagada on Sunday, September twelfth, I think it was. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Nice job, Ari.
I don't even know if he participated, but I'm so proud of you.
Thank you. It was a fun time, it was a fun time.
Is there a video of this?
There are pictures, which we never see the light of day, but there are. But it was good, it was good to go out, it was good to support Allen Dell. There was, it was a beautiful Sunday morning, and it was good. I enjoyed that, thank you. And last Sunday, I ran in the Waldorf Five-K, the Waldorf Chamber of Commerce, which was good to support Allen Dell with that, that we had another nice day. I ran with Assemblyman Phillips and some other elected officials, et cetera, so, so that was good. So, it's been, I didn't win that, I didn't come in third. Chris, Chris is much faster than I am, you know, I wasn't even.
Oh, really? No, go, Chris. Ari, did, did you meet Captain Bill Sheehan when you were at the Hackensack River?
Um, I don't know that, I don't know if I did, Jim.
How about Captain Hugh Corolla?
I don't know, I'm not sure.
Okay, the funny thing is that Allen Dell's water flows into the Passaic River Basin, not the Hackensack, but for some reason, Captain Bill and Captain Hugh have been for decades big fans of Allen Dell, and they have helped Allen Dell with the Bergen County Open Space Trust Fund to get applications through. So, I do want to give a shout out to them, and congratulations, Ari, again, for coming, coming in third.
Great, thank you, thank you very much. Ron is, no report from Ron and no report from Lisa tonight, right? Okay, well then, and that's fine, they do enough, and.
All day, every day.
All day, every day.
After hours.
And after hours, certainly. We were here last night, ten o'clock with, with Ron. So it is seven fifty-nine, I would request a motion to adjourn the work session.
So moved, Holman.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you, everyone. Just stay put. In a minute, we're going to come back with the regular session. Thank you, the time is now eight PM, and this is the September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one. Thank you. The time is now eight PM and this is the September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one regular session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining us tonight in person at Borough Hall. Welcome to everyone live streaming our meetings via Zoom webinar for those who prefer to watch from elsewhere. At this time, I ask that you please mute your devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There will be two more opportunities for the public to be heard, should they wish to speak. We will advise you at the appropriate times. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the Borough website, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and Borough website.
Great. If we can now all rise to salute the flag.
Let the regions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Homan, here. Councilman O'Connell is absent. Councilman O'Toole.
Here.
Councilman Sasso.
Here.
Councilman Strouch.
Here.
Councilwoman Wozinski is absent and Mayor Bernstein.
Here. Next, public comment on agenda items. Anyone wish to be heard on agenda items? Not seeing anyone. A Resolution twenty-one dash two-two-three, authorized capital budget amendment. I would request a motion to approve Resolution twenty-one dash two-two-three.
So moved.
A second?
Second. Sorry.
Thank you, men. Thank you, Steve. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Homan, yes. Councilman O'Connell is absent. Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilman Strouch.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wozinski is absent.
Great. Introduction of ordinances, I would request a council member to make a motion to introduce and pass on first reading ordinance twenty-one dash eleven and set the hearing for October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one at eight PM. Or soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allendale Municipal Building.
So moved.
Thank you, Matt. I would request a second.
Homan.
Thank you, Liz. Michelle, please read the title of the ordinance and conduct a roll call.
Sure. This is ordinance twenty-one dash eleven, bond ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements and the acquisition of new additional or replacement equipment and machinery, new information technology equipment, new communication and signal systems equipment, and a new automotive vehicle, including original apparatus and equipment in, by and for the Borough of Allendale and the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey to appropriate the sum of eight hundred and ten thousand to pay the cost thereof to appropriate various grants to make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds and to amend bond ordinance number eighteen dash oh nine adopted on April twelfth, two thousand and eighteen. Councilwoman Homan.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell is absent. Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilman Strouch.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wozinski is absent.
Great. Thank you. The consent agenda, I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved, Strouch. Thank you, Jim. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Matt. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Homan.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell is absent. Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilman Strouch.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wozinski is absent.
Any unfinished business? New business? And a public comment on any matter? Not seeing anyone. I would request a motion to adjourn the regular session.
Oh, poor Jackie.
Matt, second?
Second, I don't want to, you know.
Do we say all in favor?
All in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone.